My brother did it.
Okay.
Where'd you go to school?
Welcome to the Lincoln City Council meeting of May 23, 2021, 2022. In accordance with LV 898, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a brief period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify themselves, the name of an organization or group, including an address that you may be representing by such person or group, unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, organization, or group, and whether you're speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed in our third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor plan for a future agenda. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Our first item of business is a, excuse me, is just a note stating that due to the Memorial Day holiday, city council will not meet on May 30, 2022.
And before we move into an election of a new chair, I just want to take a few seconds of personal privilege just to make a statement. First, I just want to thank the council for trusting me as the youngest member to be Chair of the council. And before I pass the gavel to my North Lincoln partner and mentor, I just want to say a couple of words. To my students, current and former, who think that the future isn't for them, you can do this and you can have this gavel. To the LGBTQ kids in the closet who think that this world isn't for them, you can do this, you can have this gavel. To kids growing up in low-income families or in rough situations who think that positions of power aren't for them, you can do this, you can have this gavel. You should do this, you should have this gavel. I want to thank again to my mom for all those support she's given me over the past year. We did it. I love you and hope I made you proud. With that being said, we'll move into the election of a new chair. Are there any nominations for a new chair?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Ms. Tammy Ward, Councilwoman Ward, as Chair of the Lincoln City Council.
Second.
Councilwoman Ward has been nominated to be Chair of the council. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the floor for nominations, and let's do a roll call vote, please.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward? Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Schob?
Yes.
Beckheus?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried? Five zero.
Thank you, colleagues, for that vote of support. And we will now move into the election of a vice chair. I would entertain a motion for vice chair. Councilman Bowers, you're recognized.
I would like to nominate Councilman Tom Beckheus for the position of vice chair.
Second.
Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Seeing none, we can vote on the nomination of Councilman Tom Beckheus to vice chair. Please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckheus?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Congratulations to Chairman Beckheus.
Okay. Next up is our consent agenda, sections one-
Excuse me. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk. I'm sorry to interrupt you. We do have a expression of gratitude to outgoing Chair James Michael Bowers. So, I would like to present you with something on behalf of the council, but before I do that, I too have some words to share on everyone's behalf. Counsel, just past Chairman, James Michael Bowers, thank you on behalf of each of us, your city council colleagues. We appreciate all you have done and given over the past year to our city as our leader, the chairman of the Lincoln City Council. You continued to pave the way and lead us through the peril of the pandemic and many other challenging issues, all the while you were serving the students of Dawes School as a social worker, running your own business, your mental health practice. We should have all been there. And also being a caretaker for your great mom. Councilman Bowers, you are a strong leader and you're a strong voice and advocate for those who have no voice in our community. You are deliberate. No one can ever question where your heart lies on any given issue. You've made the tough votes and you've explained why. You have asked the reason why things have to be the way they are in city government at times, and you have worked hard to change them. We hope you can take a moment to reflect on and celebrate all of your hard work and your achievements as council chair this past year. We want to express our appreciation for all you have done, to keep our meetings running so smoothly, to be our liaison in the community and to the public. We know it has not always been easy. But what I would like to say to you personally is this. I believe public service is just not a way of life. It's a way to live fully. Councilman Bowers, as Chair of the council this past year, you have made people's lives better. And because of your leadership and your dedication, you have made Lincoln and our community better too. Thank you very much from all of us and from the city of Lincoln. Thank you so much. Here's a plaque we would like to present to you.
Thank you so much.
You are so welcome. Thank you. And let's continue, Madam Clerk, if we could.
Our first item of agenda is the consent agenda, sections one and two.
Is there anyone here? Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name's CJ McDowell. I'm a aide in the mayor's office, 555 South 10th Street. And it's my pleasure to speak on behalf of RJ Vega, who's been nominated for appointment to the Multicultural Advisory Committee, commonly known as the MAC. RJ had something come up and regrets not being able to be here tonight. I think you all are familiar with the MAC's mission to advise the mayor and city council on multicultural issues. MAC has 11 members according to their bylaws. We have a vacancy because Dr. Marty Ramirez recently resigned after 30 years of distinguished service to the MAC. RJ was nominated for his relevant professional experiences, including serving as a community organizer at Nebraska Appleseed and as a college planning specialist at Education Quest Foundation. He also serves on the board as a board member of Voices of Hope. He has a BA in Spanish and Film Studies from the University of Nebraska-Lincoln. RJ comes to us highly recommended from several community leaders. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. McDowell about our applicant? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much. Others wishing to speak on these items?
Barb McIntyre, Human Resources Director, 555 South 10th Street. And I am here to introduce Nicolette Siegfried. She has been nominated to replace Joe Rupp on the Personnel Board and will serve out the remainder of his term. Nicolette serves as part of Civic Nebraska's administrative team and plays a key role in ensuring a positive and successful work environment for their staff. She assists with hiring, onboarding, employee benefits administration, employer relations, and employer reviews. She's also contributed to professional development and planning. In addition to her work within Civic Nebraska, Nicolette is an administrator at the Lincoln Jewish Community School and is the past president of the South Street Temple. She is also a certified diversity and inclusion trainer with Inclusion Communities. She lives in Lincoln with her family and her three cats. She holds degrees from the University of Arkansas in Anthropology and Middle Eastern Studies, and we are really excited to have her joining our personnel board.
Thank you. Nicolette Siegfried, 3411 Cooper Avenue. I'm really honored to be appointed for this board. I think it's a perfect opportunity for me to serve using my unique skills and abilities. So I'm just really grateful for the mayor's appointment and really look forward to serving in this role.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Siegfried or at all?
I look forward to your service.
Yes, welcome. Thank you.
Hi, counsel. Good evening. My name is Denise Pierce. I'm with the Lincoln Parks and Rec Department. We have an appointment this evening to the Lincoln Parks and Rec Advisory Board. That's a 16-member body that advises the mayor, all of you, as well as the director of the department, on all things parks and recreation related. We are excited to welcome and introduce Jared Jackson to the podium. Mr. Jackson is the Associate Director of Campus Rec for University of Nebraska-Lincoln, and I invite him to say a few words about himself.
Yeah, well, thank you very much, Denise, and good evening to all of you. Happy to be here. My name is Jared Jackson, 2850 West Rose Street, and I am happy to be here tonight to stand and serve this community as part of this Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Parks and Rec are important to me for many reasons. One, it's been my lifelong endeavors as I've worked in campus recreation, but it is very well related to city Parks and Rec as well, as we try to provide opportunities for the members of our community to make sure that they have opportunities to recreate as they like. So I am excited to do this. It's an opportunity for me. I am new to the community. I've only been here about eight months, so I'm excited to get involved and do as much as I can.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments for Mr. Jackson? Yes.
Mr. Jackson, welcome to Lincoln.
Thank you.
Where do you hail from?
I am originally from Sulfur Springs, Texas. It's about, it's a small town about 80 miles northeast of Dallas, and recently, or I moved here from Baton Rouge, Louisiana.
All right. Well, it's colder here.
It feels better here. There's no hurricanes here, so.
Just tornadoes.
Yes.
You might like the summer, you might not like the winter.
I'll agree with that.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Councilman Beckheus, did you have any other comments? Okay. Any other questions or comments? Welcome to Lincoln and thank you for being here.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Johancy Christie, 555 South 10th, City Attorney, also the current interim director for the Commission on Human Rights. And it is my pleasure to introduce to you Mr. John Goldrich, who is being nominated to serve on the Commission on Human Rights. He told me to keep it brief, but I will, I will tell you, because I think he has some things to say, but I will tell you that he's originally from Topeka, Kansas. He has been the pastor of Newman United Methodist Church for, I think, about 10 years now. He has a counseling and psychological services that I think he started in June of 1994. He works as a counselor focused on providing struggling students with support, works at the university as a member of the African-American Staff-Faculty Caucus, very, very active in the community. He serves on several other boards as well. People that know John have often said that he can be heard saying that we must tear down walls and build bridges. Again, very active in the community, and it's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Goldrich to the council, and I know that he has some things to say.
Thank you very much, council members. Thank you for giving me this time and this space to address why I'm interested in being a part of the Commission on Human Rights. Again, John Goldrich, 7141 South 32nd Street here in Lincoln. As I ruminated upon the mission of the Lincoln Commission on Human Rights, it started to resonate within me that there's a linkage between what the commission does and some of the activities that I'm involved in in the community. Secondly, there's a connection between its philosophy and my philosophy in regards to what I do and how I exist as a human being. Let me begin with that. The commission aligns well with my philosophy of doing no harm to no individual in the community, giving them the opportunity to exist in the environment in a safe way. Evidence of this can be found in both my work as a pastor and my work as a counselor in the community and the various other entities that I'm involved in, such as Parenting Across Color Lines, which helps people to navigate through the challenging situations of raising someone who does not look like them. Let's Talk Lincoln, where we have the opportunity to have conversations around challenging issues, where we hope to tear down walls and build bridges within the community and get involved in various actions. On top of that, I sit on the Board of Cedars, the Board of Trustees. I've been with that organization for over 20 years, and I have a belief that we help to provide safety and security for the young people in the community, and we help to eliminate obstacles that might be out there. And so that kind of fits in well with what the commission does as well. Kind of bringing it together, because you know, as a pastor, we can get going for some time. Amen. In conclusion, I believe that the work that I do and have done in my life journey connects well with the purposes of the commission. Furthermore, I believe that my journey positions me well to execute the role of a commissioner if I'm allowed or selected to be that. I will end by saying working with the commission will allow me to make a difference in the community in which I exist in, something I strongly believe in being able to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, pastor. Are there, are there questions or comments for Pastor Goodwin?
Thank you.
Thank you both very much. Is there, Madam? Amen, that's right. Madam Clerk, can we please move on?
We cannot vote on these items. Item 1A is appointing Romolo RG Vega to the Mayor's Multicultural Advisory Committee for a term to expire May 23, 2025, introduced by Raybold.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll. It's been moved, sorry. I don't get the hang of this.
You're gonna get the hang of it.
I'm so sorry. It's been moved and seconded by Beckheus. Please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckheus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Item 1B is appointing Nicolette Siegfried to the City Personnel Board for a term to expire May 23, 2027, introduced by Raybold.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Beckheus and seconded by McGinnis. Please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckheus?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Item 1C is appointing Jared Jackson to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a term expiring on May 25, 2025, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Washington, seconded by Beckheus. Please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckheus?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Item 1D is appointing Pastor John Goldrich to the Commission on Human Rights for a term expiring May 23, 2025, introduced by Raybold.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Beckheus, seconded by Schob. Please call the roll.
Beckheus?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Items 2A through 2E was introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and moved by Schob and seconded by Washington. Please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckheus?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. That concludes our consent agenda. We'll move on to section four, public hearing liquor resolutions. I'll be calling item 4A and 4B together. Application of Sapahneal Spa LLC, doing business at Sapahneal Spa for a Class I liquor license located at 643 Fallbrook Boulevard, Suite 103, and the related manager application of Wes V. Pham.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on these two items? Okay, seeing none, let's move on.
I'll be calling item 4C and 4D together. Application of Star City Hockey LLC, doing business as Lincoln Stars Hockey for a Class I liquor license located at 1880 Transformation Drive, and the related manager application of Derek W. Bowden.
Hi.
Do you solemnly swear and affirm that everything you state is the truth as you fairly believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is Tim O'Neil. I'm with O'Neil Heimerd Law Firm, 800 Lincoln Square, 121 South 13th Street. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, along with the manager. And Star City Hockey is applying for a Class I liquor license. This is a change of owner application. Any questions you have, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for our applicant? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. We can move on.
I'll be calling item 4E, application of Metro Food Mart Inc., doing business as Leon's Gourmet Grocer for an addition of an outdoor area measuring approximately 110 feet by 23 feet at 2200 Winthrop Road.
My name's Topher Voorhees. I'm the store director at Leon's Gourmet Grocer, 2200 Winthrop Road, just here to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for our applicant? Councilwoman Washington?
Microphone. Good evening, thanks for coming down. Would you tell us a little bit about the outdoor area that you're planning for Leon's?
Yeah, so I'm sure you know, as being a customer, we did a remodel that ended about a year ago, and we added on a patio, and so we just want to make it an inviting space for people to come and get off the bike trail and have, have a little bit of fun and serve a couple beers or wine drinks and just have a gathering spot.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you very much for being here. Ready to move on.
I'll be calling item 4F, application of TikTok LLC, doing business as The Hot Mess for an addition of an outdoor area measuring approximately 17 feet by 12 feet at 408 South 11th Street.
Hello, my name's Serena Free, 408 South 11th Street. As you know, last fall, we passed the ordinance change for sidewalk cafes, and we're ready.
Thank you for being here. Yes, Councilman Bowers?
When is going to be the first day of your sidewalk cafe? Because I won't be the first person there.
Hopefully, hopefully it should be done, being built tomorrow afternoon. We've got a couple more inspections, hopefully done by Wednesday, maybe Thursday, Friday, depending.
Shoot me a text message, because I'm dying to be there. And also, the other statement that I want to make if I can, Madam Chair, I just want to say, I've said this before, but just thank you again for always creating a welcoming environment for the LGBTQ community. I really appreciate it, and it means a lot.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for our applicant? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's move on.
I'll be calling item 4G, application of Bourbon Entertainment LLC, doing business as Bourbon Theater for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 556 feet by 525 feet on Centennial Mall between M and N Streets on August 12, 2022, between 5:00 PM and 11:55 PM.
I'm Becky Reagan. I'm managing partner of the Bourbon Theater, and I'm here to answer questions, I guess.
Any questions or comments for our applicant? Councilwoman Washington?
What event is this going to be?
It's a Lincoln on the Streets concert. It's country artist Jamie Johnson.
Okay.
Councilwoman Washington?
That was my question.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Councilwoman McGinnis. Any other questions or Councilman Beckheus?
Do you anticipate, do you anticipate more Lincoln on the Streets programming later this year?
This year, I don't believe we'll have any more. We will next year. We try to do one or two a year.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much for being here. Let's move on.
I'll be calling item 4H, application of Sidecar Cider LLC, doing business as Zero Cider for special designated licenses to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 10 feet by 20 feet at the Hay Market Farmers Market on 8th Street between P and Q Streets on June 4, 11, 18, 25, July 9, 23, 30, and August 6, 12, 13, 20, and 27, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM.
Hi, I'm Tracy Sanford. I'm one of the owners of Zero Cider, 1746 N Street.
Chris can't, can't shirt in the same address.
Great. You want to tell us a little bit about all these great activities coming up?
Sure, yeah. It's part of the historic Hay Market Farmers Market. We've had some requests to be part of that community, and we're really excited to hopefully be there. We'd like to offer our Lincoln, one of the only Lincoln-specific cider options to the people of the markets in the form of six-packs that they could sip at their home, you know, not enjoy at the farmer's market. Yes, we hope to also have non-alcoholic options as well, though, that someone could open and enjoy right there on the street.
Very good, understood. Thank you for that. Are there other questions or comments for our applicants? All right.
It seems, it seems as though you're here every week.
I know.
We surely appreciate the activity in the community, so thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. Ready to move on, yes.
Madam Chair, seeing no one else coming forward, I'd like to move approval of items 4A through 4H.
Second.
It's been moved by Schob and seconded by Bowers. Can we please call the roll?
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckheus?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. That concludes our Section 4. We'll move on to Section 5, our public hearing resolutions. I'll be asking Chair if I can go ahead and call all three items together for our city team to come up and speak at one time. Is that okay?
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk.
I'll be calling items 5A, B, and C together, assessing the cost incurred by the city for building demolition on property located at 3830 Vine Street and 3119 Q Street. Item 5B is assessing the cost incurred by the city for property cleanup on property located at 340 Northwest 19th Street and 2304 South 24th Street. And item 5C is assessing the fees and penalties for neglected buildings on property located at 2958 North 54th Street, 5120 L Street, 2809 F Street, 3141 North 48th Street, 1028 Furnace Ave., 2641 South 9th Street, 3535 Somerset Ave., 1310 North 25th Street, 1402 North 25th Street, 2754 Pear Street, 5320 Bristol Place, and 411 East Street.
I'm Sean Stewart, I'm Chief Housing Inspector for Building and Safety, 555 South 10th. I'm here to answer any questions you might have. I believe there is to be an amendment that's next.
We do have an amendment. Thank you for being here. Are there questions or comments? Councilman Schob?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sean, these are all, when the clerk read it, she said, "Cost for demolition?" That's for the first one, right? The other two are clean, are not demolitions, right?
Correct. The first two are for demolition of properties in instances where perhaps the homeowner didn't have insurance, or there was events like fires. The homeowners either are missing or didn't have insurance.
And just, this is a long process, right? You've been working on this for a while?
Yeah, some of these, yeah. The demolitions happen a little bit quicker in just in the, because they have 60 days to get them down because of dangerous building citation on them, so.
Thank you, that's helpful. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, any other questions for staff? Councilman McGinnis?
Yeah, a lot of these fees and fines are for people that did not register?
Correct.
Is that what that is?
Correct.
Do they get a notice that they are neglected? What is, what do they have to register?
On the neglected buildings, they'll start off as a complaint that we pursue to gain compliance from the owners. If compliance has not, has not occurred, then they can go on to the Neglected Building Registry if it's a vacant property and is not being taken care of. So every 90 days, they're required to register it. If they do not, if they fail to register it, the city registers it for them and then assesses a penalty.
Okay.
Other questions for our staff? For Sean?
Oh.
None? Okay. Seeing none, thank you very much. We can move on, Madam Clerk.
We can vote on these items. Item 5A is assessing the cost incurred by the city for building demolition on property located at 3830 Vine Street and 3119 Q Street, introduced by Raybold.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Washington and seconded by Beckius. Please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Item 5B is assessing the cost incurred by the city for property cleanup on property located at 3340 Northwest 19th Street and 2304 South 24th Street, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Washington and seconded by Beckius. Councilman McGinnis?
Yes, I'd like to offer a motion to amend number one on 22R, that's 191, and that's removing the property, I believe, what we're doing out of this motion to amend.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt motion to amend number one. It was moved by McGinnis and seconded by Beckius. Please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero.
Amend?
Main motion? Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Item 5C is assessing the fees and penalties for neglected buildings on property located at 2958 North 54th, 5120 L Street, 2809 F Street, 3141 North 48th Street, 1028 Furnace Ave., 2641 South 9th, 3535 Somerset Ave., 1310 North 25th Street, 1402 North 25th, 2754 Pear Street, 5320 Bristol Wood Place, and 411 East Street, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Washington and seconded by Beckius. Councilwoman Washington?
I'd like to make a motion to amend number one for this item. This just adds, makes a substitution for Exhibit A, multiple.
Is there, okay. Moved by Washington, seconded by Beckius. Please call the roll.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero.
Now to the main motion?
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero.
We can move on.
That concludes Section 5. We'll move on to Section 6, Public Hearing Ordinance's Second Reading and Related Resolutions. Item 6A is approving an agreement of tower space and appurtenances between the City and Dish Wireless LLC to occupy and use certain city-owned parcel of real property and tower generally located at 4375 South 33rd Street.
Councilwoman Washington?
I'd like to make a motion to delay this item until date uncertain.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Washington and seconded by Beckius. Could we please call the roll on the motion to amend?
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Item 6B is approving a real estate sales agreement between the City of Lincoln and Creek Carrier Corporation for the sale of city-owned property generally located at Northwest Roadhouse Drive and West O Street.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. My name is Dallas McGee. I'm with the City Urban Development Department, 555 South 10th Street. This is the sale of a small parcel of land at Roundhouse Road and West O Street. It's a triangular piece of land. It's not buildable. It's in the floodplain, and we are agreeing to sell it to the adjacent owner, the Creek Carrier Corporation. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Mr. McGee? Comments? Okay. Seeing none? Thank you very much.
I'll be calling item 6C, approving a real estate sales agreement between the City of Lincoln and Bryan and Brooklyn Curry for the sale of city-owned property generally located at 6th and the Cedar Streets in Ashland, Nebraska.
Good evening, Elizabeth Elliott, LTU Director, 555 South 10th. This is property that we have owned since mid to late 1980s. It was originally acquired by Warranty Deed back when we were planning the 54-inch pipe that was being, from Ashland to Greenwood. So we've had it since then. It's an empty lot. Ultimately, let's see, give it a second before it pops up. I should put that up right away. It looks ideally like a good piece of land, however, our easement will run just on the west side of this property. Here in the outline box, you can see our pipe there in the red lines. That's ultimately where our pipe runs through, and we do have, with the sale, we are maintaining an easement to protect our property. They can't build over on top of our lines there. But the property owners who are purchasing it owns this adjacent property here. So it's kind of, well, essentially it's kind of the front part of their property because the road goes through here. So this just gives them some additional access to their property there. It's one that we have to maintain, so by selling it, that does alleviate that responsibility from us. It is a piece of land that, other than our pipeline, we don't need or use. So this benefits both parties, both the city and this property owner. So if you have any questions, I do have Michelle Backmeyer in Dallas here from Urban Development. They know the specifics and the details, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Director Elliott?
I do.
Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you for coming this afternoon. I have been very interested in this piece for a while, and I just want to, I have a couple of questions about their access. Right now, they don't need to cross this to access their own property. They have a drive, I think, off of the, I don't know what direction I am, so.
This should be north. The top of the page should be north. It is interesting, I'm not exactly sure, all the access that they do have, because you can see that the paved road doesn't go all the way through. But this, this gets them closer to that area to access the paved road. I don't know what their plans are at this point, but it does get them closer to that.
And what's the width of the easement that we're retaining?
That is a good question. I wonder if Michelle has the details of the specifics.
Michelle Backmeyer, Urban Development Department. There's four lots. Each of the lots are 42 feet in width, and we're actually retaining the easement over two of those lots, so the west two lots. So it'd be about 84 feet is what we'd be retaining.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Any other questions, Councilman McGinnis?
Yeah, I just have a.
I'll do better next time. Maybe.
Maybe. A quick question, could we get a copy of the purchase agreements at some point?
Yes, wasn't it attached to the?
I didn't see them in the agenda.
Okay. Yeah.
That one and for the prior.
Neither one was, okay.
For Roundhouse.
Yep.
Also.
Sorry about that, we assumed they were attached to the fact sheet. Okay. We will definitely get those to you. This one is going for $13,000.
Right, and the other one was 15,500.
Okay.
But we'll definitely get those copies to you.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any one else? Please come forward, like to speak on this item? Oh, not yet, okay. All right, seeing none, let's move on.
Item 6D is amending Lincoln Municipal Code, Section 2.54.050, prohibited acts to clarify and revise the regulations regarding conflict of interest for present and former officers or employees of the city, and repealing Section 2.54.050 of the Lincoln Municipal Code as heretofore existing.
Johansson Christie, 555 South 10th, City Attorney. This is really cleanup language. Don't believe that it was entirely clear what we were trying to do with this provision, prohibited act, Section 2.54.050. And so this is really just an attempt to, again, clean things up, make things more clear. This particular section deals with employees of the city who leave the city and go work somewhere else. And so this language clarifies timeframe to do that, and clarifies what, when they were employed with the city, what sort of actions that they have to take that would be at least prohibited for a certain time period if they were to go out and work for a different employer, so.
Any questions?
I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you. Thank you for coming down this afternoon. I noticed that the one change in the post-employment involvement and issues that you touched while you were a city employee has been reduced from one year to six months. Can you explain why we're reducing the amount of time someone needs to keep their hands off an issue they were involved in while they worked for the city?
So I would say that first, we're trying to strike a balance and try to figure out what is the fair time period for something like that. We did look at some time periods in other places, and as I say that, I don't know that I can give you a specific municipality off the top of my head that have that sort of, that have that specific six-month time period. But again, we're trying to strike a balance between allowing someone to leave and continue being employed versus having someone, what I would call raid, you know, city employees. The flip side of that is also recruiting. We don't always think of it that way, but we're also trying to recruit employees to come to the city. And so the, you know, the flip side of that is, well, we want people to stay forever or as long as they can. Sometimes, you know, they do leave and they are thinking about leaving, and a, depending on how long that time period is, that they could go work essentially in the same field, maybe from their perspective. We also try to strike that balance as well, to help us recruit people to come here in the first place.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have some concerns about people leaving and then using the information they had from their city job and using it to negotiate against the city. So I certainly like the idea of a longer period of time, but I hear you, and I'll do some more research.
Other questions for Mr. Christie?
Okay. I would just note, the second portion talks about certain other things that are that are more than six months confidential and things like that, such as that. So that, and that's a longer time period, which I think is two years, which it was before. So if it falls under what I would say confidential information, that's a longer time period.
Other questions for Mr. Christie? Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Good, thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak on this topic? Anyone else? Okay, we can move on.
I'll be calling item 6E, amending Lincoln Municipal Code Section 2.62.165, purchase of fortified service credit under this plan. Purchase of prior service credit for service for another governmental employer to clarify ordinance language and to treat all pension members equally by limiting to one purchase transaction those members eligible to purchase fortified service credit and by allowing a partial service credit purchase to members eligible to purchase prior service credit.
My name is Paul Lutowski with the Human Resources Department. I'm a police and fire pension officer, 555 South 10th Street. I'm here to speak in favor of this ordinance and answer any questions. You may remember this was originally put into Lincoln Code last November 2021. Since that time, we've spoken with the police department, the fire department, both the police and fire unions. We enter this amendment as a little bit of an update. Basically, what we're doing is we have two types of members that can purchase service credit, those that worked here before and are returning as police or firefighters, and people that worked as police or firefighters elsewhere and are coming here. And what we're doing is we want to treat everyone the same. One change towards that effect is to allow people that worked elsewhere, when they come here, to purchase part of their service credit from their previous employer. That will give each department a more recruiting flexibility and enhancement to recruit people from other governmental entities. The other thing we're doing is, once again, to treat all people the same, and since everyone has five years to make this decision, we are limiting the purchase transaction to be one time, so they've got five years to think about it. So we'll ask them to make their mind up, purchase the amount of service credit they want, and then be done with it. And then the third thing, which is a recent change, but we wanted to make it clear that if a police officer or firefighter hired by the city that purchased service credit, if for some reason they separate service before 10 years, that means they're not vested for pension benefits. We're treating this money as we would any other pension contribution, so it's eligible to be refunded to them if they leave before becoming vested in the pension plan. And then the other part, item C, is if they purchase service credits, retire, and we are not able to make monthly payments in the same amount that they have purchased credit for. There is a refund of the remainder to the beneficiary that they designate for such, or if they don't designate a lump-sum beneficiary, the remainder would go to their estate. So that clarifies that if they make this purchase, they will get their money at least back out of the pension system. Any questions?
Are there questions for Councilman Bowers?
We just have one question. When you talk to the employees, were there any concerns that came up that they had? Or was it pretty much everyone was in agreement to it?
There were concerns about the cost of the service credit. I don't know. We need to abide by actuarial standards of procedure and best practices when we determine the cost of the service credit. So what that means is that when someone buys this, I report that person's age, their current years of service, and their salary. The actuary uses assumptions that are in the pension system right now in order to actuarially calculate the cost of the service. These don't always match up exactly with what the person has in mind in terms of when they think they're going to retire or how long they think they may live. But in order to treat everyone equally and abide by best practices, we need to use a uniform method to calculate the amount of the cost for service credit.
Hi, I thought I'd just come up and have a little more. Teresa Ewens, T E R E S A, E W I N S, Chief of Police, Lincoln, 555 South 10th Street. I actually know that now, so I'm very proud of myself. So this actually came about because we were trying to find laterals to come into our department. And the thing that was brought to my attention was the fact that if they tried to buy it under the current system, there's no way they'd be able to afford it. And it was extremely expensive. So they'd have to take a loan out, or they'd have to be able to save enough money to actually afford to do that. Because right now, it states that you have to buy the entire years of service previously. And so what we wanted to do is cut down and say, okay, how many years do you want to buy back? And that's where we are today, and that's why we wanted to make the changes, so it's actually affordable. It gives us an ability to actually recruit laterals. Because it's hard, you know, you go and spend five years somewhere, and you don't want it for nothing. And so being able to come to the city, I think we'd be one of the only cities to do this. I'm not sure of any other city that does this. But, you know, it does help us in recruitment.
And I would add, in the last, I think it was just last week, actually, I contacted our actuary for more flexibility on exactly what you're talking about there. So not only can our officers specify how much service they want to buy, they can also now say they have X dollars, and then we will calculate how much service that will allow them to purchase.
Any questions for Chief Ewens or for Paul? Again, hello? Seeing none, thank you very much. We can move on.
That concludes our public hearing ordinance's second reading and related resolutions. We'll move on to Section 7, ordinance's third reading and related resolutions. I'll be calling item 7A, amending the pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annual, monthly, biweekly, and hourly pay range equivalents for employees for the city of Lincoln whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefixed by C, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by McGinnis and seconded by Beckius. Please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7B is amending the pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annual, monthly, biweekly, and hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the city of Lincoln whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefixed by A, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7C is amending the pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annual, monthly, biweekly, and hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the city of Lincoln whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefixed by M, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7D is amending the pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annual, monthly, biweekly, and hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the city of Lincoln whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefixed by N, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7E is amending the pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annual, monthly, biweekly, and hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the city of Lincoln whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefixed by B, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Please call the roll.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7F is amending the pay schedule for certain employee groups by adjusting the schedules of annual, monthly, biweekly, hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the city of Lincoln whose classifications are assigned to any pay ranges prefixed by F, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7G is amending the pay schedule for employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range prefixed by the letter M by creating the following classifications of communications coordinator, health fiscal manager, and city fleet manager, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7H is amending pay schedule for employees group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range which is prefixed by A by changing the pay range class 4115, library services supervisor from A04 to A06, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7I, amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range prefixed by the letter N by deleting the classification for crime analysis technician, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7J is change of zone 22007, application from Riga Engineering Group, Inc. to change from H4 General Commercial District to R5 Residential District on property generally located at North Woods Drive in Dawson Creek Bay, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Councilman McGinnis?
Yes, do we have anybody here from planning at this point on this? I don't see anybody. I got a few questions about having the H4 next door to the R5 and a large storage unit, self-storage unit, that we could be storing unsafe materials in? That we don't know, so just wondering if anybody was around that I guess it's okay to have residential zoning next to H4?
Well, I don't think it's part of me.
Yeah, go ahead.
Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think in most instances, we try to not do that, but I think we did something similar off of North 27th, just to the west side of North 27th, north of Superior, I believe. I'm sorry, I can picture the area in my mind where we had an I or an H, and we moved it to residential.
I'm not saying this isn't a good project, because we do have the townhomes up there, and it would be another townhome project, which is a good use, I say, to low-density commercial. But if this is something, I just want to make sure that planning's okay for us having H4 next to R zoning in the future. So if someone comes forward and says, can we do this? I was going to say it would be okay, but at this point, it's fine with me if they want to do it.
Councilman Schob?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Christie, could you come up for a question? Would you yield for a question? As you come up, my question's going to be, like Mr. McGinnis said, if we vote yes on this and we find out we're wrong, how hard is it for us to come back and change this? Do we have to do another ordinance? Can we do another? Is it possible to undo what we did? How does that process work?
Johansson Christie, City Attorney, 555 South 10th. I would, if you wanted to, this is an ordinance that's in front of you, and I think you're asking if you were to repeal the ordinance. Well, one option would be to repeal the ordinance later, if that's what you are referring to.
Change it later, yeah.
The other option, of course, is to not vote.
Delay.
Today, to have some questions answered. But generally speaking, there is always a process available for the council to undo something, whether it's by ordinance, in this case, or a resolution, so that's always available.
Thank you.
Councilman McGinnis?
I'm sure it's fine, and I like the idea of having the townhomes here, but it'd be nice to.
Have some clarification.
Yeah, just have some clarification. But on the other hand, I don't want to slow this down at all, because if we slow it down, it could cause a lot of delays.
Councilman Beckius?
Yes, without going into many particulars with the special use permit, I would just like to note that the comprehensive plan does allow for and encourage residential uses amongst certain types of commercial uses, and that this is not unheard of, as long as, you know, all parties are aware of that going into it, which is obviously the case here, so I think we're good.
Councilwoman Washington?
I wanted to acknowledge that Councilperson McGinnis did raise an interesting issue about mini warehouses and what's stored in those next to townhomes. And does anyone, really, any staff present, know? Are there rules around what you can put into a mini warehouse? Not that everyone follows the rules, but I guess the question is, are you allowed to store hazardous materials in warehouses? Mini warehouses, I mean.
Which question, is there a city ordinance against it, or is there?
Councilman McGinnis, what's your pleasure?
I'd like to go forward with this and go ahead on it, and just hear what they have to say. I'm sure they looked into it, and planning has looked into it, so if they're going to allow this, we can allow it in the future.
I guess I would just add that it seems with council, we have the ability to pull it back if necessary. But I'm happy to continue the discussion until everybody's comfortable as well, so. We do have a motion and a second. If you're ready to vote, are we ready to vote? Okay. Please call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7K is approving the lease agreement between the City of Lincoln, Holmes Lake Professional Center LLC, John Watson, Watson Family LLC, and ARW Properties LLC for the use of approximately 2,098 square feet of parking in Holmes Lake Park located at the easterly side of 2855 South 70th Street, Lincoln Lancaster County, Nebraska, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7L is approving lease agreement between the city and 3732 Holdings LLC to lease approximately 4,525 square feet of space on the easterly side of 6800 Normal Boulevard, Lincoln Lancaster County, Nebraska, for a 10-year term, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7M is amending Section 5.52030 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to minimum rider age and operator's license to provide that no person shall operate a shared mobility device unless that person is at least 18 years of age and has a valid state-issued identification in his or her possession, and repealing Section 5.52030 of the Lincoln Municipal Code as heretofore existing, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington, moved by, seconded by Washington. Let's say it one more time. Please call the roll.
Beckius?
No.
McGinnis?
No.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 4-2. That concludes our Section 7. Section 8 is resolutions, first readings, or items 8A through 8L. Section 9 is ordinance's first readings and related resolutions, or items 9A through 9D.
We will move into our public comment portion of our meeting. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and not planned to appear on a future agenda may do so at this open microphone session. You're allowed a total of five minutes to speak regardless of the number of topics for the month.
Good evening. My name is William Seedorf, and I own a rental property. It's a 12plex at 5340 Salt Valley View. And I'm here concerning a bad water bill for that property. I've been going through every channel possible since I received a February billing of $3,725. I almost had a heart attack. I started checking with billing. They said, well, check back with us in a few weeks. We'll have an answer. I go through that mode, and I call them back. They said, well, you don't really have an answer. We need to talk to the service department. I went through that channel. Then they came back with basically no answer. They said, we can't change anything. So I keep going through all these channels. I've been trying to come here to a council meeting now for four weeks in a row. Sometimes I got here and they advised me the council meeting was short, 30 minutes, and so you're able to scoot out of here, and I missed it. So this is my fourth attempt to be here. So I'm not trying to sideline not paying this bill if I want to pay an honest bill. And so finally, the mayor's ombudsman set up an appointment for a meeting between the head of billing, head of service for the water department, and some other guy, I don't know what head he was of, maybe all of the water department. Now normally, when I sit down at a conference meeting, I figure there's a little bit of give and take there. They absolutely didn't listen to anything. I guess they listened to my story, and then I said, so what have you concluded? And they all said, well, we're not changing a darn thing. Now their, the way they did this was, hey, during COVID, I worked my kind of five and a half days a week. I didn't stay home and do nothing. But the billing department says, we couldn't send out people to read your meter. And so we guessed, absolutely, they said, we guessed. Okay, so I had somebody from the service department out, August 19th of 2020, told them I thought there was a problem with my meter reading because the bill seemed a little bit high for that bimonthly period. Okay, now, he says meters are never wrong. But isn't it a coincidence that September 1st of 2020, that meter was changed? Then, all this other stuff, this guesswork, was going on for 16 months until they decided, for some unknown reason, to go out in January 26th of this year and change the meter again. And then they come around and they go, oh, we made a mistake. And then they come around and they go, oh, we made a mistake. This new reading here says, we underestimated your usage by a huge number. And so, yeah, your normal bill, which varies from about $450 at the very tops, $700, now it's $3,700. That consumption they're saying I used amounts to eight months of extra usage on a normal basis in a 16-month period. Now, common sense tells me there's absolutely no way that happens, and there was no broken pipes or anything like that. And so, and my comparison would be, is they said, we estimated because we didn't want to send people out there because of COVID. Now, this is open to the public area where that meter is, so they didn't have to ever meet a person face to face. So I think that's a pretty lousy excuse personally. So my comparison I gave them was, hey, if you went to the gas station, and every time you fill up your tank, you look up, I go, oh, I owe this much money. You pay it. And suddenly, 16 months later, that gas station calls you and says, oh, our system didn't work. We were estimating, just giving a wild guess, what the bill might be, and now you owe us $3,000 more. I think everyone up there would say to the gas station, take a hike. And that's what I'm saying here. This is totally unfounded. And then they choose to do it in the month of February, which happens to be when sewer usage is refigured. And so then they figured my sewer usage for the next year based on what that astronomical number is they've dreamed up, because they were only guessing for 16 months. Now, I'm sorry, I've had a business that I owned for 41 years, and I don't guess nothing. And I've talked to all these people, billing, service, head of the water department. I was here at a board meeting right after, it was our council meeting, right after it was over, and I talked to Mr. Choob there about this problem. And everybody up there says, well, that's our system, that's our protocol, we can't change nothing. What I'm saying to the city council is, something needs to be changed because this system they're running under is severely broken. You don't estimate a bill for 16 months.
Sir, your time, five minutes have expired?
Okay.
Are there questions from the council? Yes, Councilman Bowers?
I just want to make sure. Thank you so much for coming out. I just want to make sure that I'm kind of clear on the timeline, because I can definitely understand how this would be super frustrating to get a surprise bill for almost $4,000. So I just want to make sure I got the timeline correct. So on September of 2020, the meter was changed. And then the meter was changed again in January of 2022?
Yes.
Okay. And then they said that they did not send people out to check meters in person while COVID was going on?
Correct.
Okay. And then you received a bill from the water department for those 16 months?
Yes, every bimonthly period, and I paid what they billed me for in a timely manner until this thing showed up.
And so then you received a bill in February for $3,700, and they said that that was because they misestimated the past eight months out of the 16 months?
Well, they misestimated the last 16 months.
Sure.
What I say, what they claimed I used would be the equivalent of eight additional months of my normal usage. So it's like they were billing me for like 24 months.
So essentially, what I'm inferring is that they're saying that in their guessing, they misestimated an additional $460-some dollars of usage over those 16 months every other month.
Rounding it out, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. When you got your bill between those 16 months when the pandemic was going on, did your bill seem different or weird or anything like that?
No. And I've owned this property for almost 40 years. And so I know what a normal bill looks like. And it just rolled along looking like a normal bill until I got this bill for $3,700.
Okay.
And then nobody seriously wanted to sit down and negotiate anything. They just said, this is it.
Madam Chair, can I ask one more question?
Of course.
Thank you. It seems like you definitely have come out to a lot of different council meetings and tried to get resolution, kind of get ran around a little bit. So I want to make sure that we get some, at least a step here today. Mr. Christie, can I ask you a quick question? Just about process, not about anything material? If, I'm sorry, I'm blinking on your last name.
Mr. Seedorf.
If Mr. Seedorf wanted to file a claim against the city, would he be able to do that?
Yeah.
What would the process be so he could get that taken care of? So that way he would come in front of council formally?
Claims can be filed through the city attorney's office, through the clerk's office. I'm happy to
Walk him through that.
Talk to him about his options and where to file it.
Mr. Se... Sorry.
My concern is I don't want to get my water turned off with that building. You know, I have 12 angry tenants. And, you know, I've been trying to get through all these channels since February.
Sure. So I mean, it sounds like Mr. Yoh... Mr. Yohansi, Mr. Christie will walk you through the process on how to do a claim against the city, and then it'll come in front of the city council, and then we can have a formal vote on it?
Okay. Do you feel like you need any other details? Actually, the water department gave me a printing of what my usage has been for like the last two years, but...
Right. The council wouldn't be able to take any action on it today, so...
Yeah, I'm not expecting any action on it today, except for I feel that their routine of the water department to say, yeah, we can estimate for 16 months in a row, I think that ought to be totally trashed. And they, the heads of those departments say, it's not within our powers to change anything.
Sorry for your frustration and the confusion on how to get access to some sort of resolution. It sounds like Mr. Christie will set up a path to move forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Other, yes, Councilwoman Washington. Mr. Seedorf, could you, would you mind remaining just for a few more questions, if you don't mind? Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know that my question is directly for you, but there was a sort of a generalized question, what might we need, and I would offer that I would, I would like to see from LTU, a series of regular billings that go back beyond, before COVID, so that we could see a pattern before we get...
Yeah, I've got two years' worth of them here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions?
What would I do? Make a copy of this and give it to this gentleman?
That gentleman there.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Seedorf before? Okay, I seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For being here. Is there, are there people that would like to appear today? Yes, please come forward. Thank you.
You have been busy.
What's that?
You have been busy.
Well, my name's Liz Shay McCoy, 2700 Sheridan Boulevard, and I am the chair of the Effort to Save the Pershing Mural. And I am here to thank you, short and sweet. And the City of Lincoln has been so supportive of this effort. And I'm talking about you, the mayor, and urban development. I love this city, and I love working with its leadership. And this has been a big one for me, to start a fundraiser to raise a million dollars starting in March. March 1st is a big job, and especially with a lot of economy things and the war and all, and gas prices. So it's on and on. But I just wanted to, I think thanks goes a long way, and you don't get thanked enough, and the city doesn't get thanked enough for all they do. But when I called Urban Development last Tuesday, talked to Hallie Salem, I said, Hallie, we're not going to make it. We're not going to make that first million by May 20th. She was so nice, and, because it's hard for me, and I don't like to admit, like, gosh, I can't do this. I'm like the little engine that could. I think I can. I think I can. And Hallie was so great, and she said, well, how much time do you need? Well, I said, could we have till June 1st? And that would give us, afford us to give to Lincoln time when all the funds from, that are donated to the Nebraska State Historical Society Foundation go directly to the mural. And I, all I felt from Hallie was support. And I know urban development is working against a deadline too. But kindness and empathy also goes a long way. So I just wanted to let, I wrote a narrative, and I'm just going to give it to you, because sometimes when I sit down at the computer, I can write my feelings. But I can talk pretty well, too, when it comes from my heart. And at this point in time, we have received 514 donations. And that's a lot. And these are from people in Lincoln and state of Nebraska and outstate, and even, we got one from Sweden. We have 376, a little over that, 376,000 to raise in nine days. Well, I'm putting the number out there. I'm saying, this is how much we have to raise, and it's a lot. But Lincoln is generous, and Nebraskans have grit. And if they believe in something, it can get done. And so I'm going to give this really beautiful narrative to you to read before you go to sleep tonight. And I just want to offer my thanks for sometimes a thankless job.
Yeah, yeah.
And for all you do for our city. So I just am here to thank you and the mayor and urban development. So that's all I want to say, and thanks for this, this time. Any questions?
Oh, I have one more thing.
Go ahead.
We're exploring some other locations within the City of Lincoln for placement of that mural. We want to find the best possible area so the public can see this and enjoy it and appreciate it and study it. If it's brought on to eye level, art educators can study that mural with their students and say, what do you see? So I forgot to tell you that, but it's in that narrative. So when you read it, you'll see that once we get the mural down, that's, that's first and foremost. Then we'll have other, additional time. So thanks for all you do. Thanks to the city. Thanks to urban development.
Any questions or comments for Liz?
Okay.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you for your support.
And good luck.
Best wishes.
Thank you, Liz. Others who'd like to come forward this evening?
Good evening. I'm Roy Helm. I identify with the pronouns of he and him. I reside at 2750 South 13th Street, which is on Oto, Missouri, and Pawnee Land. I guess I wanted to start out by thanking Councilman Bowers for his time as chair, and welcome and congratulations to Councilwoman Ward for assuming that role. I also want to mention, this is my first time here in the chamber seeing the new Lincoln flag, and it's, it looks very good. And I am hopeful to see it around town and a lot of other places, and hopefully on some households. But one of the reasons I'm here this evening is I had intended to come earlier to, to say this, but I had some home matters come up, and I do feel very fortunate that I have a home that matters. And, and that is very sincere. But I don't know if you recall, but I had sent an email to the mayor requesting that she veto your decision on the rezoning of the property near Wilderness Park and Highway 77. And I just wanted to be here in person to be able to demonstrate that, you know, I meant what I said in the past, that I don't hold grudges. I still find the decision appalling. I'm not surprised by it. It is progress. But it is disappointing that more isn't taken into consideration for the native and indigenous peoples that, that we took this land from. And I do need to do one thing, and this is a personal thing, and just to offer my forgiveness. Because I can't, I can't carry that disappointment and that, those emotions with me. It will interfere with my resolve to move further in doing more of what I can do. Granted, my forgiveness has nothing to do with absolution or anything more than myself, actually. But it's important to me to share that with you and to offer that forgiveness, because I don't hold it against you. I mean, you made decisions based on your own best judgments, and that is part of this process. So, you know, where, well, I'll just keep, keep moving on and support where I can. The other topic, and this is more of a personal, again, a personal outlook, but, you know, while we are approaching Memorial Day, and it's a day reserved for recognizing those who have lost their lives, whether it be in service to our country or after that service. And it's a very serious, a serious day. And, you know, those of us who, you know, have very mixed feelings about the military can also hold, hold those people close to our hearts. But I hope that we can also look at this a little more broader, because, again, there is a sector of this country, a marginalized group, the native cultures, who fought and died for their countries and their way of life. And they are part of our country. And I hope we take some time to recognize them as well, because they, they were doing what, what we did as a country and a nation. And they're doing what the Ukrainians are doing. So let's be supportive of, you know, all of those in this country who have sacrificed and given. But again, you know, I appreciate the thanks that you received before, and I too thank you for the work you do. And I'm glad that I can step forward and speak truthfully, without hate, without malice. And, you know, we will have other conversations, and there'll be other issues. But, you know, I too appreciate the work that you do, and let's, let's move forward and have a better Lincoln and see more of the flag. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come forward? Looks like that is all. So, is there a motion? Yes.
Yes, seeing no one else, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded by McGinnis and seconded by Becky S. To adjourn. May we please call the roll?
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Choob?
Yes.
Becky S?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
We are adjourned.